I would like to call the Tuesday, January 30th, 2018 Committee of the Whole Order. Would you please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. It seems like we were just here.
We were.
[laughing]
We were just here.
Mr. Clerk, will you take the roll, please?
Alderman Redpath.
Here.
Alderman Señor.
Here.
Alderman Turner.
She's probably not here because she found out southeast was rated number one in the state in three A basketball.
Oh, wow.
[applause]
Alderman Philtensy.
Here.
Alderman Proctor.
Here.
Alderman DeSenzo.
Present.
Alderman McBenhaman.
Here.
Alderman Tylin.
Here.
Alderman Donilon.
Here.
Alderman Hanauer.
Here.
Mr. Chairman, a quorum is present.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. I'd accept the motion for the approval of the January 9th, 2018 Committee of the Whole Meeting meetings.
A move.
Second.
Second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Are there any presentations tonight?
No, sir.
Thank you very much, sir. Well, let's move right through this. Next, we'll have ordinances tabled for remaining in committee. Mr. Clerk, could you please read those ordinances?
2015-121, 2017-103, 2017-266, 2017-435, 2017-436, 2017-467, 2017-470, 2017-475, 2017-489, 2017-532, 2017-533, 2017-557, 2017-558, 2018-005.
Is there anyone who would like to remove any of these ordinances for committee consideration?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we remove 2017-557 and 2017-558 and make a motion that we send them on to the council for the debate agenda.
Mr. Clerk? Second.
I have a motion and a second to move 2017-557 and 2017-558 to move for debate, mister?
Yes.
Alderman Redpath, I'm sorry.
Question. Alderman Redpath, is it without recommendation?
I would like to send them to the debate agenda without a recommendation.
Second.
So, there's a motion and a second. Any more discussion?
I should read them.
Yes, sir. Would you read those, please?
Okay, 2017-557, an ordinance amending Chapter 37, Section 37.81 of the 1988 City of Springfield Illinois Code of Ordinances as amended by increasing the city's simplified municipal telecommunications tax from 4% to 6%. 2017-558, an ordinance amending Article VI, Chapter 100, Section 100.52 of the 1988 City of Springfield Code of Ordinances as amended by increasing the local sales tax from 2.25% to 2.50%.
There's a motion on the floor to move 2017-557 and 2017-558 to the debate agenda without recommendation. Is that correct, Alderman? Yes. Very good. Alderman Tylin?
Did we ever get an updated sheet? Alderman McBenhaman pointed out when these were brought to us that the fiscal impact was not listed on the ordinances as required. Did we ever get an updated ordinance fact sheet for these two?
Mrs. Zirkel, do you know if that was sent out for us?
I would, in a way, I would have to defer to Bill in the sense that I think the information has been provided on how much each...
We know the numbers on a full year would be 4.2 million on the sales tax and 1.2 on the telecom from the notes that I made that day. However, I think the fiscal impact should... Those are just my handwritten notes. Our rules require the fiscal impact beyond these ordinances, so I think we need updated fact sheets for next Tuesday.
We can certainly do that, but...
We can do that, but it's still a state of flux as to when they would actually be implemented if passed by the council.
I think maybe the best way to handle it would be to say that if implemented on March 1st, the fiscal impact is this, and if implemented on July 1st, the fiscal impact is that.
Sure, we can provide you a document showing that.
So, point of order, Corporation Council, we can still move this to the debate agenda? Is that correct?
Certainly. Yes.
Thank you. Very good. All those in favor signify of moving 2017-557 and 2017-558 to the debate agenda without recommendation signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. Mr. Clerk?
CWLP, 2018-015, an ordinance approving and authorizing execution of lease agreement for 4121 Greenberry Road, Site 95 for the City of Springfield Office of Public Utilities.
Move for consent.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Public Works, 2018-016, an ordinance authorizing execution of an agreement with the State of Illinois Department of Transportation for preliminary engineering of the Walnut Street Quarter from South Grand Avenue to Capitol Avenue, MFT Section Number 17-00484-00-SP for the Office of Public Works.
Can I get a motion?
Consent.
Motion for consent?
Consent.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
2018-017, an ordinance authorizing execution of professional services agreement for preliminary engineering with Knight EIA Incorporated for Walnut Street Quarter from South Grand Avenue to Capitol Avenue for an amount not to exceed $118,622.93 for the Office of Public Works.
Move to consent.
Second.
Any discussion?
That should say Knight EA, not Knight EIA.
Okay. We'll make that correction. Noted.
All those in favor with the correction noted signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
2018-018, a resolution notifying the State of Illinois Department of Transportation that motor fuel tax funds in an amount of $118,622.93 may be used for the city's share of engineering services to design construction plans for the Walnut Street Quarter road diet from South Grand Avenue to Capitol Avenue for the Office of Public Works.
Move to consent.
Second.
Question. What is this? Mr. Clerk, what's that?
I'm not sure what that is.
Corporation, Mr. Zirkel, do you know what that?
Director Mahoney does.
It's slowing down the traffic, but Director Mahoney can come up and speak to that.
This would be Public Works if South Grand to Capitol. That's just the funds that we're paying for the 17, right?
Exactly. It's actually a safety grant we have. We'll be reimbursed 90% of those funds that are spent for the engineering. Road diet's just a description of what they're going to do there.
Okay.
They address the intersections, and they're going to put in a turning lane and two traffic lanes and bike lanes.
Very good. It's the first time I've seen that term, so I'd just like for the discussion for the explanation.
Director, if I can, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Alderman Donilon.
Is Lawrence and Cook, I mean Lawrence, excuse me, a part of that?
Yes, Lawrence Walnut intersection will be a part of it.
Wow.
Yes.
Any more discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
2018-019, an ordinance authorizing the purchase and sale of real estate, real estate purchase counteroffer and addendum with U.S. Bank National Association for an amount not to exceed $32,000 for the purchase of real property located at 2409 South Fifth Street and relocation expenses and closing costs not to exceed $2,000 and for a total amount not to exceed $34,000 relating to the Springfield Rail Improvement Projects for the Office of Public Works.
To consent.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
2018-020, an ordinance authorizing the purchase and sale of real estate with Scott Hetzbeth for an amount not to exceed $12,530 for the purchase of one parcel of real property located at east of Sixth Street and north of Princeton Avenue and relocation expenses and closing costs not to exceed $11,945.50 for a total amount not to exceed $24,475.50 relating to the Springfield Rail Improvements Projects for the Office of Public Works.
Move to consent.
Second. Director Mahoney, sorry about that. On this phase of the railroad relocation, do you know how many properties we're going to have to acquire for this?
This is just the start. This is unusable Segment IV, so this is the first initial round. So, there's a few more. Jim Maulser, if you want to speak to that, but there's quite a few more that will be coming, so this is the first phase of that.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Maul, would you mind coming forward?
Yeah, the Usable Segment IV project extends from the south of the piece we're building right now, the Laurel and Ash Street underpasses, which ends right about Princeton before you get to Sixth Street and extends all the way from there, all the way down to Stanford Avenue and includes the new underpass bridges at Fifth and Sixth Streets where there's single-track railroad bridge. They're now going to put two double-track railroad bridges there and also build the wider corridor. And in order to do that, it requires 42 parcels be purchased. These are just the first two of those. At this point, we've made offers to 21 other property owners. We have a few more who have signed, and we're ready to submit those to the council soon. And we have another half a dozen offers that are ready to make. So, a total of 42 parcels to be purchased for this portion of the project.
And while you're doing those underpasses, when it gets to that time, will you have to close the streets on Fifth and Sixth, or will the streets remain open?
The streets will remain open most of the time. There will be lane closures for an extended period while we build the abutments to support the bridges, and then we're planning on weekend full closures, probably two or three-day full closures while they set the new bridge girders in place. We'll do that over weekends nighttime to minimize impacts.
Very good. Any more questions? Thank you very much, Mr. Maul.
Just a minute.
A lot of this is happening in Ward 6, and I'm getting a lot of phone calls and very angry phone calls about it. So, I have been working with Director Mahoney. We have one issue going on right now, but I foresee several others in the future. So, I have been working with Jimmy, and we're going to set up a public meeting to address the issues.
I think that's very important. We understand the kind of comments that you're getting. We're receiving these comments, too. We think it's important that any opportunity we have that we can get out and explain the project to people, understand the land acquisition process, because it is a very complex federal process we have to follow, to understand that and understand the project and the benefits of the project. We're more than happy to do that at any time.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Sure.
Alderman, I would ask you to have your constituents go to the website because they do have public meetings, and they give out quite a bit of information. So, they've been very forthcoming with all that on the whole process.
Oh, they go to the website, and then they call me again.
No, no. Come to the public meetings because they have open public meetings.
Yeah.
All right, Mr. Clerk?
2018-021, a resolution notifying the State of Illinois Department of Transportation that motor fuel tax funds in an amount of $58,475.50 may be used for land acquisition for Springfield Rail Improvement Projects for the Office of Public Works.
Move for consent.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
2018-022, an ordinance approving the location and sketch map of the Countryside Subdivision for the Office of Public Works.
Just a minute before we vote on it. Mr. Clerk, could you go back to 20? I think we skipped over 20.
It was read, but I don't think we voted. Move to consent.
Okay. So, just for procedural purposes, could you read 2018-020 again so we can go through the formal procedure?
Yes. An ordinance approving the location and sketch map of the Countryside Subdivision for the Office of Public Works.
No, I think you already read 20. We just got to vote on it. I think we had a motion as second.
Okay, so...
021 is the one you need to vote on.
Okay, 021. Vote on 021 first.
Yes.
Okay.
Do you want to roll call vote?
Yes, sir.
No, we don't need it.
No, we don't. No, we're just...
We skipped voting on 20.
Voting on 20, that's why.
Oh, in 20.
Talked about it, and then we kind of blew through.
If someone makes a motion, and maybe it has been made for 20 and second, then it could be a voice vote.
We've got that.
Okay, so for procedural purposes, we need to vote on 020.
Yes, you have a motion by Alderman Hanauer and a second by Alderman DeSenzo.
And that's for 2018-020. Are those... Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And now we'll move to 2018-021.
We already did it.
We did that, so I'm all confused.
22.
22.
I'll be quiet, okay? Can I go home?
Too many meetings a week for you, huh?
2000...
All of us.
2018-022, an ordinance approving the location and sketch map of the Countryside Subdivision for the Office of Public Works.
Do I have a motion?
Second.
Motion for consent and second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
2018-023, an ordinance approving a supplemental appropriation in an amount of $25,000 from the unbudgeted unappropriated fund balance and revenue in the MacArthur Boulevard Tiff Fund for the Office of Planning and Economic Development.
Move to consent.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes. What are we... Are we spending this? Are we moving it to another account? What are we doing?
I believe this is the same situation we had last year where there was more revenue coming into the account than was expected, and so now we're reimbursing one of the developments that took place in the Tiff District.
That's correct. Yes.
Thank you.
It's just moving it.
So, these are Tiff funds?
These are Tiff funds, yes.
Okay. Thank you very much. All those in favor of moving 2018-023 to the consent agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
2018-024, an ordinance authorizing payment to Charles Redpath, the City of Springfield Police Officer, to settle a workman's compensation claim for case number 16-WC-033406.
Move to consent.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'll vote present. Mr. Clerk, could you note that, Mr. Clerk?
Noted.
Thank you.
2018-029, an ordinance authorizing the execution of an agreement with Innovate Springfield to provide economic development services to the city for a time period covering March 1st, 2018, through February 28th, 2019 for an amount not to exceed $100,000.
Motion for discussion. Second.
Okay, and I understand that there's some people here that would like to discuss this. I see some bright smiling faces. So, when you come to the microphone, could you give us your name and your address, please? And who will be our first guest?
I'll be me.
May proceed at your pleasure.
My name's Katie Davison. I live at 731 West Woodland Avenue in Springfield. I'm the Executive Director of Innovate Springfield, and we come here today to speak on behalf of the proposal that was submitted for the support of Innovate Springfield for $100,000. I have served as the Executive Director for coming on two years now, and in the first nine months of my service in that position, we were really building the organization and establishing it in its location downtown at 15 South Old State Capitol Plaza, getting it prepared to be a co-working space for our business incubation members and getting the word out about business incubation and what we were trying to do at Innovate Springfield. So, first, I just want to thank you for the opportunity to speak on this. I know you're all faced with some difficult decisions as you're faced with challenges around creating a balanced budget, and this is a significant ask from us and one that is first, the first time coming before this body. So, we do appreciate you hearing us tell you more about what we're doing and the work that we've done in the last two years. And as I mentioned, the first nine months were really about building up the organization and getting it ready. We kind of had an empty space, and the last 18 months have really been about growth. So, in your packet that I sent out, I believe I gave you all, I believe you all have seen much of this before. We gave a packet with our proposal letter, but we have had significant growth. We were originally founded, we had startup money from the Q5 Initiative through the Chamber, and that really helped us get our feet on the ground and get off to a running start. We have continued to have support through the Community Foundation for the Land of Lincoln, which is our supporting organization currently. We're exploring the option of partnering with UIS and having them become our sort of supporting organization, and that would then in turn build our capacity and our ability to serve our members. So, we really, what we strive to do is to be that catalyst for the entrepreneurial growth and economic development in Springfield, and we believe that we have really proven that theory in our first year just based solely on our membership growth. We're at this, the highlights in here are for 2017, so we even have more members now than we did when this was put out in January. But we have 30 companies that are receiving incubation, so those are startup companies that are new to Springfield, and they are, they're calling our office their home office, which means they are downtown and they are supporting local businesses. They're, they have revenue that they've created, 1.6 million in gross revenue last year alone, and they've raised funds, angel investment. So, that's something sort of new to this area, I believe, and something that we will continue to look to grow, is bringing that investment into those startup companies, so growing an investor pool. We hold and convene several activities that many of you have attended and where we bring people into the space and try to really support that entrepreneurial ecosystem. So, we're asking tonight for you to really support our initiatives and support our growth and continued economic development growth in the city. And I'm here to answer any questions that you might have as well.
Alderman Donilon?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Katie, I understand the whole incubation part of it. It's 30 companies, is that right? Just a ballpark, how many individuals, how many people are coming downtown that would not have if this project wouldn't have happened?
So, at any given time, all of those members could be coming downtown. So, we expanded our hours to 24 hours just recently, and that has also increased the activity in our space in the evenings. But we, those members have the opportunity to come down for both workshops and seminars that we host monthly or just calling it their home office. So, we have several members that come in every day, just like I do, and walk in and work on their companies.
We're constantly discussing ways to bring people downtown, whether it's work downtown or live downtown. It sounds like this is helping that initiative and effort, and I think it's wonderful. I think some of the things that have been done, been talked about in Springfield for a number of years, and they're actually getting accomplished, so good job.
Thank you. Yeah, we do, too.
Alderman Tylin?
I think my questions would actually end up being more for Val Yazle after all the other ones are done.
Do you want to wait till the...
That's what I was just going to ask. Should we wait and do that at the end?
If you have something that's not pertinent right to this moment, we'll let the other two speak, and then if anyone else has any questions or concerns, you can ask them at that time. Thank you, Kate. Oh, Alderman DeSenzo.
As you know, I'm a big supporter, and I think more of this is needed in Springfield, and I think that if we don't take this opportunity to support you, it's a missed opportunity for the city, not just for downtown. This is something we need. It's a new idea. I understand it's a lot for some people to wrap their heads around, but this is the future, and we need to jump on board.
And I just would like to also invite any of you to come down if you've not. I know several of you have, and the door is always open. It's just a really great place to see young, vibrant entrepreneurs that are working on these projects that otherwise may not have, they may not have taken off, you know, gotten off the ground, so...
Okay, thank you. The next speaker, please.
Good evening. My name's John Strumpf. I'm the President and CEO of the Community Foundation for the Land of Lincoln. I live at One Wildwood in Leland Grove, actually. But moving to Springfield, February 23rd, closing on a home.
Congratulations.
Thank you. I'm excited to be back in the city.
What word will he use?
I think yours, Alderman.
Maybe we annexed it in.
Mr. Clerk?
Thank you for the consideration of this request here tonight. I will say on behalf of the Community Foundation Board of Directors, we've been very excited about this initiative going back to 2015 when it was established as a supporting organization of the Community Foundation. And if you go to the space, if you've been there, it's a palpable experience to see these entrepreneurs who are working hard at carving their own path in life here and really contributing not only to the economic development of the community, but to the community as a whole. So, we're particularly excited about this, and I want to thank Chancellor Cook as well for the involvement of the University of Illinois Springfield from the inception of Innovate Springfield, and especially now as we're talking about transferring operations to the university. I think that's something I know in my life in this area. It's been a kind of a dream to have more of a university presence downtown. It's happening already, and I think it can come to fruition in more so with the support of the city council. And just to solidify, I think, the notion of this effort all around, you had founders of this coming from philanthropy and the business community, and I think the public sector, it's time to support this effort as well. If we're looking at things to improve our community for the economic vibrancy and the vibrancy of the core of the city especially, as Alderman Donilon is suggesting, this is it. This is a big effort for the community, and we are just getting started. With support of the public sector, I think can accelerate even further and faster. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have, or I can just pass it on to the chancellor.
No questions.
Thank you.
And Chancellor Cook, before you speak, you all have a wonderful student union out there. I had the pleasure of being there for the opening ceremony, and that's quite a wonderful building.
Well, thank you, and it was a pleasure to have you there. And for those of you who may not know, the mayor was one of our speakers at the ribbon cutting, and he did a wonderful job, said a lot of things that I was hoping he would say, so that was a great day for the university. Well, thank you very much. I'm glad to have the opportunity to weigh in and just reiterate our enthusiasm about this idea of UIS taking over leadership for the business incubator. We're very excited about the progress the incubator has made. UIS has been involved with the incubator from its earliest ideas. Professor Bruce Sommer from the College of Business, for example, Dr. David Racine both keep office hours there and are very, very involved. But as many of you probably know because you have experience with these organizations, it's very typical for universities to be taking the lead on business incubators of this type. I was very involved myself with the development of a wonderful business incubator at the University of Northern Iowa when I was there, and the other two, the branch campuses of the University of Illinois in Urbana and Chicago both have business incubators affiliated with their campuses. So, we think it would be a great move, but in order to make it happen, we really need to have collaboration from the city to help us do that financially. So, that's why we have come to you with this proposal, and we really look forward to your support. So, I would also be glad to respond to any questions. Thank you.
Alderman Proctor?
Oh, procedural. I guess the clerk's asking you to state your name before I start my thing.
Oh, I'm sorry. Susan Cook, K-O-C-H. I'm the chancellor at the University of Illinois at Springfield.
Thank you. There we go.
Sorry.
I just want to say thank you for embracing Innovate and being a part of this because it's an exciting thing for downtown because I met with them, I've been at that place probably like four or five times on tours, and it's just the buzz feeling you get when these people are working on their projects and stuff, and it's just a lot of energy. And then talking to Bruce and talking to everybody about Katie and John about the next steps, the future that they have, and you're going to be a part of that, so it's really exciting to hear that. And then one aspect that they brought up was not only will it be for the general public to be, you know, part of the incubator, but your faculty and your students and stuff. And then when you and I met way back when I first got here, you mentioned your school is transitioning from a public policy school to also to like IT and stuff, and so you've got a lot of IT grads who are looking, and it's great to maybe keep them here in Springfield when they graduate, and this is just part of that puzzle. So, thank you for being a part of that.
Well, I really agree with you. The technology side of this is huge, and I can't lay claim to always know what they're talking about when it comes to technology, but I don't have to know because they know. And your point about students is so true because I think one thing that we do anticipate doing as we plan to grow the incubator further is to have even more involvement of students, and those students come from, you know, many places, but they are potential future residents of this community, and that's what we're after.
Right, and we need to keep them here.
You bet we do.
I just want to let you know, this is definitely going to be a big part of the budget discussions we have going forward, and so this is just a motion for discussion so everybody can hear this out and gain more knowledge about it if they weren't able to take a tour of the facility, but this will be a big priority in my budget discussions moving forward.
Thank you.
Alderman Hanauer?
Yeah, and I've had a chance to talk to Bruce, and I've known Bruce for a long time. My concern is with the budget situation we're in, is there a different funding source we can grab from, I mean, this is coming from corporate, and I think, you know, I think it's definitely worth funding, but is there a different funding source to where it doesn't affect the corporate side? Right now, you know, we know we got 1.3 with the taxes. We got 1.3 whole, and we got, you know... We got 1.3 whole and we got a, we got, you know, so I, I do think this is a, is a great project and I, I just would like to see us find a different funding source that, that we could, we could use for this.
I guess I'll answer that. You know, I did ask if it was TIF eligible way back when, when John Stremsperfer approached me and at that point in time, the answer was no. That may change, I'm not sure. Depends on the, if you get tied to specific initiatives that they cover. But the direction they're going, just so you understand, is that this is an ongoing process. It's a, it's really going to be a Kickstarter for downtown Springfield and Sangamon County. And with that, it's, you know, if you go to the St. Louis's Cortex, that's where you should go and see how you have the incubators grow and thrive because it's really the combination of people working together, you're linking your resources and your community together, how they can work together to make things happen in innovation. And so, you know, there's other experts like Bruce Summer that can speak to that detail. But really the goal is, the end goal is in three years at UIS, if the funding comes forward and we actually reach that point in three years, that they would be able to take it from there. And so really this has been one of the bright spots of the economic development report. And I'll just read one part of it because it's been talked about in the media quite a bit. And that's why I was interested in this and this was with regards to UIS. Everybody knows how much we've tried to get UIS downtown and Chancellor reminds me, we are downtown. It's in Innovate Springfield. And so we appreciate that support. And it says, "To the extent that UIS can expand its presence into the downtown areas of Springfield, prime opportunities for dynamic partnerships with business and government can more easily happen. With the additional economic impacts of having students learning, working, and living in the city's core, it would be a real game changer for the landscape and vitality of downtown Springfield." So really that's what it comes down to. You know, we can look at it as a number. I look at it as an opportunity for our future because what it does, it does the startup businesses and someone can correct me if I'm wrong, I've heard this, when they talk about the number of job losses, what they don't count is someone that's working in a regular job and then they do a startup business. That doesn't count as a job, they, that, you fall off the job loss, but they don't count, count that as job creation. Is that right, Counselor?
That is my understanding.
Yep. So that's one aspect, but the other aspect of it is for the young people. I think Alderman Proctor brought that up, retaining young people, it's that energy, it's that vibe that we need downtown. And just for the record, one of the concepts of the Y Block, that interactive park, I asked that that corner, Fourth and Capitol, be available for future development if the opportunity arises. So it could be a university presence or it could be something else, but that is, still needs to be worked out in the development agreement. So we have to look beyond just 100,000. Really what we should be asking ourselves, can we afford not to do it? Because they built, it took a long time to get to this point. It was a lot of effort, thanks to the university, John Stremsperfer, Bruce Summers and a lot of, you know, the entrepreneurs made it happen to get to this point. And that was the one bright spot in the report that we could hang our hat on, but we don't, we do not want to let that go by the wayside. And so I, you know, people are jockeying for position or trying to create the Economic Development Group, what we want to do is keep the momentum, momentum going. And so that's what we cannot afford to lose is that momentum and they're right on target. I mean, if you look at the future development of any community, it's all about entrepreneurship, it's about working together to get things done on an innovative realm and that's what they brought to downtown Springfield, which we really appreciate. But as far as other funding sources, I'd ask Val Yezel to come up and share her ideas of any other options we may have. But again, you know, what we have to ask ourselves, can we afford not to keep the momentum going? Previously it was funded through the Chamber, which we supported, $100,000, that was a piece of that. And so that's why we were approached to fill that gap in the interim.
Well, I do have a few comments I'd like to make because I believe supporting entrepreneurs should be the number one goal of any economic development entity. A business incubator should be closely aligned with an economic development goals for a community and they create jobs in the long term. We've got to look at things in the long term. Small businesses are where jobs are created, are where jobs creation lie. And incubators improve the community, not only through the creation of jobs, but also increase tax revenue, which should be music to your ears. Growing an incubator increases business chances of survival. Most incubator, businesses that are grown in an incubator, their survival rate is much higher, like 87% compared to those that just go out and start on their own where there's failure rate within the first five years. I've had the privilege of not only being, the day that the Innovate Springfield was created, being able to be in the room, but I've also had the pleasure of watching them grow. I've been able to attend a lot of their meetings that they've had, the trainings that they've had. I also was able to participate in a, a night where they showcased a lot of their entrepreneurs and it was an exciting opportunity to see so many innovative and creative minds that we have in our, in our incubator downtown. And from a selfish standpoint, having a relationship with Innovate Springfield for the Office of Planning and Economic Development means that I have a, I have a captive audience in which to help grow their businesses and keep them in our community. So from my perspective, it is just, we've got, it's almost, I hate to tell you, it's kind of low hanging fruit. So we have provided $100,000 in the past for economic development for, to the Chamber and it's, I feel like this is a good investment in our dollars to spend this with Innovate Springfield.
Are there other funds that?
You know, we've looked at, we've looked at TIF, which I think is probably everybody's thought process of we've looked at TIF. I don't believe, and I don't know this for 100% certainty, but I don't believe that's the model because I think everybody points to training as being an option. Training is an allowable expense in a TIF if it's for skills training for a business that is within a TIF. This doesn't seem to me to be an allowable expense. One of the other things that we've been receiving a lot of information on from the Illinois TIF Institute Association, they're really cracking down on TIF eligible expenses. They're really watching them very closely. So I would prefer to err on the side of caution for something, yes.
Alderman Donaldin, I'm sorry, Chris.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, I was, to that point and Alderman Henauer's point, I was, you know, thinking about this initiative and the ordinances that were coming up yesterday and, you know, racking my brain on, as it sounds like you have been as well, Ms. Yezel, coming up with non-corporate fund ways to fund the program. And, and I, you know, I did, I got out the TIF Act and, and one of the, one of the eligible costs that could at least be looked at, and what I suggest is, and I spoke with Corporation Council about this as well, is just, not just today, to get a legal opinion that would, you know, not be my non-legal interpretation or someone else's, but basically the TIF Act says cost of job training and retraining projects is, is an eligible cost and it doesn't say anymore. I was involved in, in 1999 in the rewriting of the Act and that's something that we were able to get in the Act. And before, the definitions of eligible costs and definitions of what would qualify as TIF was all very, very subjective. There was a lot of, a lot of ambiguity, there were court cases, a lot of interpretations. Tried to put as much definition as possible in the Act so that there wouldn't be this ambiguity and gray area. So I think there, there is some flexibility there in that particular section. Also, there's a section that says the cost of marketing sites within the redevelopment project area and it goes on. I think it's clear from the presentations we heard earlier that the goal is to bring people downtown. The goal is to reinvigorate downtown and the community as a whole. And if we could do it with tax increment financing, it just seems to go with the spirit of the Act of redevelopment and reinvigorating old downtown, old, old areas like downtown Springfield. So I would just encourage a legal opinion where we could take a look at it and get it finite because quite frankly, if it's, if we can't use tax increment financing funds as an alternative, you know, it, it changes the whole complexion. Doesn't change my support for the, for the project itself, I might add, because there's a lot of good things going on.
Alderman Donaldin?
Director Yezel, I guess my first question is, is that I know that in the past we have used TIF money to reimburse people for the rent or the lease or their office space or the business space downtown. And that has been an allowable TIF expense. So I think where I was going with this, and I don't know, Katie, whether or not you guys are paying for your office space that you have down here? And I guess my follow-up, she says, she says they are. Have we already used, because I think it's the, what, the first 12 months or something like that is what we usually do, where they're allowed to apply and then get TIF, TIF reimbursement for that lease or that rent during that first year? Has that been done for Innovate Springfield at this downtown location? Okay. Is it possible then, because we know that this is a TIF eligible expense and it's something that's been done repeatedly in the past, could we take, and I don't know if utilities could be added along with that rent, but can we get that application done to go ahead and reimburse them for the 12 months of lease that they would be eligible for and then reduce the $100,000 amount by the amount that the TIF can reimburse?
We'd have to get a legal opinion because I've asked about this specific program and it was disbanded because it wasn't TIF eligible. So we'd have to research that and see if it's TIF eligible.
What, to briefly address this, the nature of the activity, I think, controls. The mayor and I actually talked with John this afternoon about getting some more detail about what they're actually doing. And if we can get that, then we'd be, I'll be happy to give you something formal or in writing promptly.
Because just from a, a layman's point of view, they are a business that is open to the public, that is operating downtown inside the TIF district where the public can come in. It looks according to the very basic sheet that they gave us with expenses and revenues that they are trying to operate as a for-profit. Not necessarily, you're a nonprofit. Okay, but you do have a profit and loss sheet here that was provided to us that shows that you are bringing in revenue to offset expenses. So like I said, I'm just, there's a lot of comparisons here with some of these other businesses that I know we've had come from downtown that have gotten the lease reimbursement. And I'm not saying that we're looking at TIF dollars to operate the business, I'm saying we're looking at TIF dollars for the location, which may be the difference, so.
And we'll check on that, but.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, my follow-up would be, the funding source, the 001-111 DEVL, DEVL 1232 line, obviously that, that line is funded from another source. And I'm assuming then that it is completely funded from corporate fund?
Correct.
And that was the, the question that I had, was where was the actual line source from? There are no other items then that you've been able to find under economic development that would qualify then?
Yeah, we basically have TIF Enterprise Zone and the CDBG. That's the funding that we have, other than corporate.
Okay, so there's no like grants or anything else out there right now that would cover something like this?
No.
All right.
But we'll always keep looking.
Well, and like I said, just trying to think outside the box to try to find a way to, to lessen the effect on corporate fund.
Sure.
Alderman DeSenzel?
I just want to stress that this isn't just about bringing people downtown. This is about incubating businesses. This is about building businesses. For any of you sitting around this horseshoe that haven't spent some time down there, I beg of you to, to take an hour out of your day and go check out what's going on. It's everything from, you know, technology to app building to event planning. I sat on a panel over a year ago about women in politics that was hosted by a UIS professor. So it isn't just a, it's not just about bringing people downtown, it's about creating businesses in Springfield that are going to stay in Springfield. It's about employing people. It's about thinking outside the box and getting the ball rolling and getting the city moving in the right direction. That's what Innovate Springfield is all about.
Alderman Henauer?
And, and I don't debate the, the value of the project, but next week, well, we've been looking at cuts, right? Next week, we get to vote on taxes, right? We get, and we're still going to be doing cuts. The taxes don't pass, we fund this, we give up somebody's job. That's, that's where we're at. We can fund this, but at whose job? Whose job we take? I, to me, this needs to be held until we get through the budget process and then we take a, a good, hard look. I, I think it's a worthwhile project, I really do, but at this stage of the game, when we're asked to raise taxes, again, we cannot keep, if, if we keep going, our, our budget hole's going to be 20 million because we don't, nobody wants to cut anything. I mean, and I'm not, I, I wish we could fund everything, but the fact of the matter is, we got to make cuts. We're 1.2, 1.3 million dollars if the taxes come in. Where are those cuts coming from? So if we fund this, instead of 1.2 or 1.3, you know, if times are good, I would be, I'd be all over it. I'm not against the project, it's just fiscally, we have to watch ourselves because we are in a, in a very tough situation. And I, I mean, I just think that we got to really tread cautiously here. And I think, I, I'll make a motion, we hold in committee until after the budget process is, is done.
That's what we did. We signed up. We went for discussion.
Yeah, yeah.
We're just discussing it.
So you want to withdraw that?
I'll withdraw it then, that's fine.
Katie, could you come back up, please? Because I, I heard you, you're, you pushing the concept, but can you explain exactly what the business, what you, what you all do down there in simple layman's terms?
Sure, I'm happy to. So simply, people with business ideas, so we've got a couple of them here in the audience, entrepreneurs, come to us and we have, we offer resources to them. The primary one is the actual physical space itself. So we have desks and, and offices that they can then rent. So we do have an income, a bit of income that we get from our membership. They also have access to office hours with advisors. So we have a relationship with Sickich and they bring in an accountant twice a month. Our members can sit down for free and sit for a half hour and, and meet with the accountant. We have the same type of relationship with, with Brown Hay and Stevens. They have an attorney that comes over twice a month. And then we also do the same with UIS. So that's again, that, that partnership that we've had with UIS the whole time. So sitting down with, with Bruce Summer from the Center for Entrepreneurship to just talk about general business development and he can give them direction and advice on, on, on their startup. So primarily, it's really those accesses to resources to, to reduce that barrier of, of entry for them. So a very low cost to have a professionalized office space with conference rooms, printer, wifi, mail service and, and, or they can call that their office. So we look at them just like our coworkers. They're there every day with us.
Very good, thank you. Is there anyone else that wants to speak on this while we're discussing? Please step to the mic, state your name and address.
Thank you very much for having me up here. My name is Barnabas Helmy. I'm the CEO and founder of Smash Toast. I live at 139 North Illinois Street in Springfield, Illinois. I just want to emphasize how much a difference something like this program has on an entrepreneur like myself. I was lucky enough to be a part of, of the process whenever I founded my company in January of 2014 and Bruce was, and John were very intimately involved with the creation and looking for spaces. So I actually reaped the benefits of their expertise throughout the process. Since then, you know, my, my product has, I've been in San Francisco and St. Louis and all these different places, but I'm still here. And I think the bottom line, when you say you may have to cut a job to do this fund, but you're actually providing jobs and if we don't fund the program like this that provides entrepreneurs and entrepreneurs are people that do not quit, you want these people in your downtown. You want to fill your downtown with people who are going to put everything on the line to see their dream come true. And if, you know, even if 30 people in downtown for a year, you know, they're spending 10 bucks a day, you've got $100,000 in income to businesses around the, the community. But at the end of the day, you, if we don't provide these opportunities for entrepreneurs like myself with our tunnel vision, we will have to go somewhere else. So it may... So it makes sense to the community, and I really do urge that you all make a trip down there and check it out and see what we're all doing, because we're putting our hearts into this. And I think it would be fantastic to have more community support. Thank you.
What is your product and what does it do?
My product is called Puck, and it basically puts all of your remotes on your smartphone for a low cost. And my goal is to bring the smart home experience to everyone at an affordable price point. We're manufactured in Jacksonville, Illinois. You know, my, my whole company is Midwest. We're developed in Indianapolis, manufactured in Jacksonville, developed in St. Louis as well. And I'm very, I've, I've worked downtown for 18 years, so I'm, I'm a very big supporter of the local movement, so.
Alderman Proctor?
You were recognized in Las Vegas, weren't you, for that national show? Can you talk about that? Because I think that's, that's to put spotlight on, you know, everything that you're doing and, you know, the national attention that it's, it's receiving.
Thank you, yeah. So we had our second year at Eureka Park, a consumer electronics show in Las Vegas a couple of weeks ago. You know, and it's, if you haven't heard of that, it's, it's an enormous tech conference, and it's, we're incredibly lucky to be a part of that experience. You know, from that, last year is, that opportunity gave us the Walmart, where we're in 150 Walmarts now, and we're in probably 25 other retailers currently. And just got off the phone with Shark Tank yesterday, so I mean, it's like very exciting, right? But like I say, without support, you know, none of it would be possible, absolutely. I mean, if Bruce wasn't holding my hand in the beginning of it, I have no idea even how to get started in something like this, because I just had an idea, you know? It's not necessarily all the business side of it, so.
Alderman Tyler?
Barnabas, I guess one of the questions I would have for you as a, as a part of Innovate Springfield is, when you look at their, their budget, it says on here that there are member dues. And is that something that you participated in as a?
Absolutely.
And if you don't mind my asking, what kind of member dues do they, do they ask the people to bring in?
Well, you know, I mean, it's, if I'm, I'm using the office space, which I had previously, now I use the coworking space more, because I also have a coworking space at a location in St. Louis. So it's, it's the resources. I go in there whenever I need a meeting or whenever I need to print stuff or use the Wi-Fi. I mean, there are so many different reasons to go in there. If there's a presentation I need to make with investors, it's a, it's a wonderful location, and, and it energizes my company as well as myself, so.
I guess the point that I'm, I'm trying to get across to the public is that your business has a little skin in the game too here, that you're actually.
Absolutely.
Putting some money into Innovate Springfield, not just receiving free services per se. You are participating by adding member dues and paying something out of your business or out of your own pocket.
Absolutely, yeah.
And as I said, do you feel comfortable saying what that amount is? Is that something that's set for all businesses?
Yeah, I think right now I'm paying 100 a month.
Okay.
I mean, it's, you know, I mean, you can extrapolate from that.
It's a reasonable amount, I'm not.
It's absolutely reasonable.
I'm just trying to point out, though, that you guys do have a little skin in the game when it comes to the actual business itself.
Yeah, absolutely. And, and, you know, it's, I bring up St. Louis because we won an ARCH grant down there, and, and I get to see what, you had mentioned Cortex, what they're doing is, you know, and what we're doing, and, and there are so many opportunities for partnerships and things as well as we grow. You know, it, I don't know, it, you, you feel compelled to give back to the town. I mean, it's, it's, it's worked for me before, you know, it's working with St. Louis. It's like, if, if I'm here in the community supporting me, that's, that's my nature. I want to support those who are going to help me as well, so.
Thank you.
There's absolutely skin in the game.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, anyone else want to speak? State your name and address, please, sir.
Hi, my name is Bruce Summer. I live at Five Woods and Lane in Springfield. To, to your question, it ranges from $50 for, for an entrepreneur. Barnabas pays 100, he gets a little desk and more privacy. And then UIS has an office there, and other businesses have offices from $300, $600 that they're adding to the, to the revenue that you're noting. Two things I wanted to point out, you heard some of the data, and the term low-hanging fruit, oh, by the way, I'm a co-founder of Innovate Springfield, also a faculty member at UIS, so I'm, I'm kind of wearing a few hats here. But outside of that, I do, I invest in startup companies and help entrepreneurs come, bring their dreams to life. And low-hanging fruit, if you look at the Economic Development Authority's data, there's, there's hardly a better outcome, I think, for public dollars. They'll, they'll show you $10,000, gets you about 46 jobs in, in incubation. And, and they could be biased, but if you look at the data on business startups and, like Director Regazal was saying, there's data that show, the Small Business Administration will show 56% then no longer exist in five years. Other researchers show about 80%. Incubation turns that around. 84% of incubated companies survive after five years. 87% of them stay in the community. They average about 160 jobs relative, or the average incubator. So if you're looking for, I think, dollar return for economic development, it's, I bet you it's going to be hard to find a better one than this. And to your point, Ralph, I think, yeah, you guys have a tough job right now, 2.1, $3 million deficit. But my, my contention is, if you don't spend that $100,000 now, what's that going to be next year and the next year? I think this is the thing that stops that. If you look at the, the revenue generated from these companies, you're going to see going forward, that gap is smaller and smaller, and hopefully it, it'll get eliminated. So thank you for all the great words, by the way. We're so proud of what we've done at Innovate Springfield. And one last kind of perspective I want to leave you with is, as an early-stage angel investor, you know, the, the folks that go in early, that take all the risk in investing in business, that's been done. That's been done by the Community Foundation, individuals, including myself, I, I put my own money in this, and the SLC. What's now is, we've got a proven concept. We've, we've con to that next phase. We've mitigated the risk, and now this is where the, the high return for your dollar is. So I really encourage you to give that a thought, and thanks again for the time. Appreciate it.
Before you go, Alderman Proctor was, has a question.
I just wanted to follow, you hit the nail on the head for me, because a lot of people argue about, instead of raising taxes, we need to grow the pie. And you just hit the head that this will help grow the pie, you know, in Springfield and help regenerate the economy, so.
And you'll see some immediate return for that. You've already, you may, you're going to hear from another one. But then that entrepreneur culture, what, what the, the report has shown, we need that here. I've been away 20 years, came back here. There's, there's 1,200 of these around North America. Springfield, at the time its size, to not have one was, was surprising to me. But yeah, you're going to see not only that true direct economic impact, but five years from now, you're going to see a real cultural difference. You're going to see folks, more folks like Barnabas and Kurt, sorry.
Don't go anywhere, Alderman DeSenzel?
Can you speak to the rating that Springfield received in Tech Crunch magazine?
Yeah.
And what that means?
So the Tech Crunch, which is a great magazine and great publication, marked us as, I believe it was, this is the first time we hit the map of startup companies in the Midwest. We're number 12, as, as I understand. So we're the, I don't know if necessarily best-placed startup business, 12th best in, in the Midwest. But yeah, that, that, they, they have five different criteria, but the number of business startups and the amount of funding they've created and the impact they've made, so, yeah, Springfield is just starting to go on that map, and we have an opportunity to grow it significantly. And I think the partnership with UIS will, will expedite that.
Thank you, Mr. Summer.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
The last one.
You're the last one? Okay, that.
I'm excited about that.
You're self-proclaimed the last one. Please state your name and address, sir.
My name is Kirk Kellis. I live at 2125 Reinwick in Springfield. Esteemed members of the council, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate the opportunity to talk on something that's near and dear to me. Innovate Springfield has, has really touched me and has, has helped push me down the entrepreneurial path. For the past 10 years or so, I've been a one-entrepreneur. I've, I've read thousands of books, I've watched tons of vlogs and blogs, and I never knew how to start a business. I've always wanted to, and I've always tried to, until I reached out to Innovate Springfield and met Bruce and Katie and, and, and the staff there, I had no idea how to do it. They were able to guide me. And I think one thing that's been missing out of this conversation that we've had tonight so far was the mentors. They, they allow us, they, for example, I have an advisory board now full of mentors, you know, tech guys, business operations management people. These mentors have been a strong advocate to help me get to where I need to be with my product. I'm at a different level than Barnabas is right now, but at the same time, I'm gaining steam. As he mentioned, we don't give up, we're entrepreneurs. This is all we have, this is what we want more than anything, and this is how we're going to provide for our families and, and bring people downtown. And as Barnabas mentioned, you know, I'm one of those guys that spends money every night whenever I go down, and I'm working till 10 o'clock, 12 o'clock at night downtown. At Talkology, at, at Nine Island, things like that, I bring my family down there to have coffees down the street. So I, I do appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight. I, I appreciate the opportunity for you guys to, to consider funding something that's been so near and dear to me and that's going to help propel so many young entrepreneurs to hopefully provide a lot of jobs for Springfield.
You didn't say what your business was.
So right now, I have what's called Union Buddy. It's a mobile app that connects organizations to memberships. It helps, it conquers all the logistical issues, such as paying dues, who they've worked for, how many hours were paid in, benefits and things like that. So Union Buddy is what we're working on right now, is, and, and we're working on a couple of other things called Care Schedule for Dentists. It allows call centers to be, you know, call centers to be conglomerated into one entity too.
Oh, I thought you were going to say we pass over the call center.
No, 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 no. We like to, we want to keep everything here and keep everything localized for us here.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else? So this for discussion. Alderman?
Thank you. I'm thinking back 27 years ago, when, and listening to all the comments, when I put my shingle out as a self-employed person, went into the private practice market and with nothing guaranteed, and that was 27 years ago, with two young children at home. And it took two years before my revenue could exceed my expenses. And you've got that fixed overhead, and in a, in a situation like what the Innovate is offering, you've got very flexible terms for a startup and very modest and affordable terms. So I completely agree with the, the opportunity that's being created here for startups and for Springfield downtown as a whole. We do have a significant budget problem, though, and so I think it was wise to bring this up for discussion and to hold this until our budget discussions are complete, to see what tax revenues we're going to bring in and what costs that are on the table take place. So if that was your intention, Alderman Proctor, I think that was appropriate. You're the home alderman, so I, I think it was good to put this on discussion in the time being.
So Mr. Zirkel, what's our next move, since this was just for discussion?
Well, if the committee does not take action, then it simply remains in committee. So you could move on to the next ordinance, if you like, if no one else wishes to, you know, address the, the subject matter.
Anyone else wish to speak? Thank you very much. Mr. Clerk, could you move to the next ordinance?
General City Business, 2018-025, an ordinance authorizing a decrease in the number of Class A, C1, D, E, and G liquor licenses due to failure to renew for 2018.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed?
Noted. 2018-026, an ordinance approving the appointment of G Virginia Connolly to the Springfield Disabilities Commission.
Second.
Any discussion? Is Ms. Connolly here tonight? Very good. All those in favor moving this to debate signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
2018-027, an ordinance approving the appointment of Molly S. Burns to replace Norm Sims on the Historic Sites Commission.
Move to debate.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of debate signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
2018-028, an ordinance amending Chapter 100 of the 1988 City of Springfield Code of Ordinances as amended pertaining to online travel companies.
Move to consent.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Discussion.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, Alderman.
I realize that it's extraordinarily difficult to provide a fiscal analysis for something that's never been tried before, but could we have, you know, something offered in the way of, for example, what Rockford is generating in revenue, or, because our rules do require some kind of fiscal analysis, and if that fiscal analysis states that we just, you know, have zero opportunity to measure, you know, I think that could, should be in the record somewhere.
Well, there is, a report did just come out from Airbnb Midwest that stated Springfield saw a little more than 2,900 guests, which spent $218,000 on Airbnbs last year alone. So that's just one, that's just one site, and we're talking about all OTCs, online travel So it's diff, it is difficult to produce a fiscal analysis.
Mr. Zirkel, could you address that, please? I was going to say, we could make an inquiry at City of Rockford, just to see if they do have a revenue, what they've received, because theirs has been in place originally, I think, for a couple of years, if my memory serves me correctly.
It's new, there, this is a new thing with all cities, and about seven cities across the state have, have taken this on now. You know, we talk a lot about how much we lose out to online sales of everything. So this is just one little piece of the pie that we can grab and that, you know, we're able to recoup some of that lost revenue. This would allow us to, to, to get the hotel motel tax from online. If someone books a room on Expedia or Travelocity, we will now receive the hotel motel sales tax from that, which we currently do not.
Mayor?
I guess Alderman McMiniman, were you looking for the expense? What it would cost to implement it, or the revenues, or both?
Exactly, Mr. Mayor. It's both sides. I think we need to know which department of state government, of city government will be responsible for reaching out to notify all these online travel, travel companies that they have an obligation to remit to the City of Springfield. And we need some assignment of responsibility for that task within city government, so that would be important to measure also.
How it's worked.
That will be, um, do it.
Yeah.
How would that, who would be, you know, how would that be collected and who would be responsible for collecting? I, I appreciate your comments, Alderman McMiniman.
How it's collected is that it's on a monthly basis, and they cut us a check. That's how it's, that's how it's worked in other cities across the state, across the country. Everyone's jumping on this.
That's kind of like, is that the honor system, or, I mean?
We have no way of knowing. I mean, other than if we, and we do have a letter of support here from the Springfield Hotel and Lodging Association. We have, I mean, the hotels have some knowledge of how much they get in online bookings, but to go to every single hotel, pull everything for the past year and decipher those numbers, they weren't prepared to do that.
I guess, have, have you spoke to anyone that has an Airbnb and seen what their reaction to this ordinance would be?
Yes, I have. I've spoken to several people. There's over 100 Airbnbs and Homeaways in Springfield alone. I don't think people realize how many there are. When people come to Springfield for an extended stay, visiting scholars, people visiting the universities, they usually stay in an Airbnb as opposed to a hotel. And this is passing, the Airbnb, it's not costing them anything.
But, but my concern is, I would like to hear from some of them, to give them the opportunity, like we do, like we do everyone else, to, to let, let their feelings be, be heard on the issue. I don't know if, if that would be appropriate, Mayor, or do we just want to go ahead and pass the ordinance and?
Well, for passage, this really is in competition with the hotels, so I think that's why we have the letter of support. And then going back to, I think, a couple of years ago, Alderman Redpath brought it up, where some were acting as such on the lake.
Right.
And so that's where we came up with the new regulation. So this is a way to have a more level playing field with regards to Airbnb and then the hotels and lot, other lodging opportunities.
Not that I wouldn't be for it, but I, I think it's, if we're imposing some type of fee on someone, we ought to be able to hear.
We're not imposing a fee on someone. We're people who book.
But the industry, we're imposing a fee on the industry, which is the Airbnb industry, because these people are booking rooms.
But they're completely unregulated.
Okay.
This is a completely unregulated industry.
Very good.
So we're just trying to get, you know, some sort of.
We're imposing a fee on someone in, in, in some manner, so.
Someone that's coming to visit Springfield, just like if you would go stay in a hotel someplace.
Right. But we're still imposing a fee on someone and I would like to hear from one of the people that are involved with the Airbnb, even if it's just by letter, I just want to hear something from them. That's all I'm saying, so I can know what their stance is on this.
Well, we can put an announcement in the neighborhood newsletter and that goes out to 65 neighborhoods, so that should cover it, I would think. Unless we have specifics, I, I don't know who's doing what, so unless someone has a specific thing, hopefully the media will cover this and put out an announcement that we would do it, plus social media, right?
Absolutely.
So, we'll put it out there and then, just like any zoning case, it's, you know, they have to come forward, so we'll do the announcements and that, but they have to take some ownership or some responsibility in knowing what's going on in the community.
And all I'm saying is a procedure, even in the zoning cases, we announce it and give the people time to, to make comments on it. Alderman McMiniman?
Here's a follow-up question, just to understand the scope of, of this, basically a new tax.
It's not a new tax.
Okay, it's a broader, a broader tax than what we had.
Yes.
It's a broader hotel motel tax.
It's amending a current tax.
So, let's just take a situation where someone has an Airbnb operation in Springfield and let's say they don't utilize an online booking service.
They have to. It's all, Airbnb is all online.
Okay.
It's completely online.
Okay.
So is HomeAway. So is VRBO.
Okay, what we could do is have someone come and speak to how that all operates, you know, Airbnb or whoever. I think they have their own.
Alderman Fergensy?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I'm sorry, Alderman, continue.
So, let's take the situation where it's an Airbnb and the booking was made online. What happens where the, there's a partial payment made online, is that the way it works sometimes?
No, it's all paid upfront.
All paid upfront?
Just like when you book a hotel room online, like I did today for Chicago, I have to pay everything upfront, except for maybe parking or any of my meals or anything that I have at the hotel.
Okay. I don't want to complicate my question too much, but I've been in situations where I made an online booking and I pay upfront to the online service and then I get to the hotel and there's a kind of a confusion about what needs to be paid at the hotel. So, that, never mind, that might have been a particular situation.
Alderman Fergensy?
Are there, are there any regulations that dictate what the penalties for this are? I mean, if they don't pay it or they don't report it, are there any penalties and what enforcement do we have?
Now, we're getting into a new kind of uncharted territory here. This is something that is a new way that cities are going after online industries to try to recoup some of, some of the lost income, some of the lost revenue. So, we, I mean, if they don't pay us, I don't think we're going to take them to court, but.
Second.
That would be up to Corporation Council.
Alderman Donlin?
But most of them are signing up for and saying, you know, they don't want to lose this business and they don't want to, they want to play ball, they want to work with cities. So, most of them are, I mean, cities could be imposing rules on Airbnbs.
Mm-hmm.
We don't have, you know, we could be imposing regulations on Airbnbs.
Alderman Donlin?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Alderman, I appreciate you bringing this forward. I think it's, the mayor said it best, it just levels the playing field. We have entities out there, individuals out there that are utilizing the online service that aren't charging the hotel motel tax presently, like bricks and mortar plate, I'll say hotels and motels do presently, levels the playing field, makes sense, it's going to generate more money for the City of Springfield. And to be very clear, it is not a new tax.
It's not a new tax.
Alderman Proctor?
I have two questions for McCarty and I, maybe this will help with Alderman McMiniman's question. For this tax, we'll have to collect it, right? The city will have to collect it or does it go through the state?
No, that is correct. We would collect it as we do the hotel motel tax.
Okay, and you do not anticipate having to hire an additional staffer or anything to talk, you know, to, to collect this tax?
No, that shouldn't be necessary.
Okay, thank you.
Maybe just by way of information, Alderman DeCenzo made reference to, this is becoming a more, I would just mention in researching this at the Alderman's request, there was a court case is actually filed by municipalities here in Illinois against some of the online companies. Some of the ordinances were invalidated, attempting to impose a tax. This particular ordinance is based on the result in the court case, therefore will be held valid. But the interesting part is that the online companies actually were working with the cities to work out the detail, just like any other sales tax person, where essentially they were trying to automate it so that they would automatically collect it and then issue it to the cities. So, I would expect this to become more of a normal process as more cities are doing it. The particular case involved there involved Rockford and I think seven or eight other Illinois communities that sued the Airbnb-type online companies. And the company's response is where they wanted to work with the cities and come up with a standard process. So, I would just mention that I do think once Springfield, if it is adopted, once we give notice to them, I think will be treated as the other cities in terms it'll become kind of an automatic, you know, computer process.
Alderman DeCenzo?
We just spoke last night about the state rate being so low. These, you, you can probably book a hotel room in Springfield for less than the state rate on some of these online travel companies and we don't see a dime from it. That doesn't make any sense.
Alderman McMiniman?
Again, I'm trying to formulate my question in the best possible way, because this is something new and different and I'm in favor of this. I just want to make sure that we're, you know, we got all our ducks in a row and we're understanding what's happening here. So, my question is this, for, to the extent that we have Airbnbs currently operating within the city, and apparently they're not paying us anything, is that?
That's correct.
Okay, but.
They're bringing revenue by spending time, you know, spending money on our restaurants and, you know, things like that, shopping.
They're not, they're not paying us a hotel motel tax.
No.
Okay, but when I look at our definition for hotel currently existing, it says any building or buildings in which the public may, for consideration, obtain living quarters, sleeping or housekeeping accommodations. The term includes inns, motels, tourist homes or courts, lodging houses, rooming houses. So, that's our current definition. So, I'm just, my question is this, are they escaping a tax that they should be paying us right now?
Yes.
Yes.
So, this is really, you know, they owe us money right now. I mean, if we had a good enough audit operation, we could be collecting money from them.
Especially with them using businesses like Airbnb and others to book these rooms, it's very clear that they're avoiding paying something.
So, Mr. Zirkel, it comes to mind, do we, do we need to amend it or do we need to change the definition of, of what according, it's the?
The current ordinance, the current ordinance, or, I'm sorry, the proposed ordinance is consistent with the court decisions. Therefore, I think that it is proper in its current form with the amendments to cover the online booking companies, which is presently not being reached by our hotel motel tax.
Alderman Hana?
Just to give you a little perspective on this, I know down in, like Lake of the Ozarks, they have a ton of these, right? And one of the concerns, the hotel lobby was fighting because they weren't these, in a sense, like somebody would buy a house and that's all they would use that house for. And so, what was happening was they weren't registered as a business, it was, they, they got around the, the whole business side of things and they actually, so they, they weren't paying business property tax, things like that. And there's a.
Business utility rates.
Right, and there's, there's been a lot of, a lot of fighting going on down there over this whole industry. And from the hotels' perspective, they're saying, well, wait a minute, you know, I, I have to pay, you know, this tax, I got to do this, this and this, and they're getting around it. So, I mean, we're not the only ones that are, that are doing this, you know, that are looking into this now, but it is an issue, you know, with this particular type of industry. So.
And I love Airbnbs. I've stayed in plenty of Airbnbs all over the place. I think they're fantastic. This isn't to punish any Airbnb owners. This is, this is just to collect the tax that we should have already been collecting.
I think this is no different than what we were looking at when we started having to deal with the whole idea of Uber and Lyft, that you had people turning their personal cars into taxis. And yet, we had restrictions and things that we were doing to people who were coming to the City of Springfield in order to be taxi drivers, where we limited them to park to pick up people, where we limited, limited them to be able to be. And yet, these, these people who were just downloading an app and deciding to, you know, go into business were being able to do things that these established businessmen were not. And I think this just goes right along the same line.
Very good. Just want to make sure we're covering all our bases. Any more discussion? All those in favor of consent signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Is there any unfinished business? Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor.
I'd like to call Chief Helmerx up and recognize him. We had a special presentation today with regards to the ISO rating. They presented us with the Class 1 rating and there's a report that they provided and I think they'll be going to the Alderman.
Yeah, I'll get a letter together and, and the report and send it to you. It'll, it'll match. I don't know if I gave you the report the first time that we did the PowerPoint presentation, but ISO came to town today and did a, a short presentation for the mayor and, and Corporation Council and kind of explained it, they explained it much, not much, I don't think much different than I explained it to you about how we achieved that rating and, and what it meant. And, you know, we're extremely, we're extremely happy. We think it's a great thing for this community.
Congratulations, Mayor.
Thank you.
Yep, good work. He's worked hard at it, as well as the command staff and everybody in the fire department, so we really appreciate it. And the one point they did make, it's really a community rating because it wasn't just the fire protection aspect, it's the 911, it was the water pressure and I don't know if you want to touch on any of that, but that's one thing that they talked about.
It basically works, there's 105.5 available points on a 100-point scale. Our communications, which is Sagamet County 911, is graded and they're worth 10 points, 10% of the score. They look at our, our water distribution, how our hydrants, where our mains at, how much, we, we actually test the hydrants, the fire department does, how often they're tested and everything that does with water, water distribution and that's 40% of the points. The other 50% is us and how, and how we respond to calls, how much training we achieve, everything that we document that goes along with that. And then they're added to that, the 5.5 is a community risk that, that's an extra points that are added at the end. How well we get our message out to the community, how well we look at buildings, how we do investigations, our inspections, and that, that's the 5.5. So, there's 105.5 available points on a 100-point scale. We scored 90.09, we barely made it. But it's extremely tough for a fire department like us to achieve that because we don't have any automatic aid really, except for Chatham in our very south, southwest area, a little bit south. We don't have any neighboring career departments that can help us out and we cover an extremely large area, 100, about 124 square miles. You compare that to, it was in the budget, you compare it to Peoria, it's about 50, Rockford's about 60, Bloomington's 24, Champaign's 24, 25, you know, so it's extremely tough for a department like us. You know, everybody, everybody did their part. Water stayed about the same, 911 did a little bit better, we helped them a little bit with, with their data and we had a big improvement. And some of the improvement was the 5.5 bonus points that they added, that they previously did not have before 2013. Then take that into account. And they let us use an alternate method to calculate our distribution. Before, it was a mile and a half road miles for an engine company, two and a half mile road miles for a truck company. This time, they let us use an alternate method that goes with NFPA 1710 and basically says we have an engine there and five minutes and 20 seconds, we have two engines and a truck there in nine minutes and 20 seconds and the percentage of that. So, that was a big point game for us and we did some things internally with our training. You know, it's all about, it's not that we trained more, we just were able to produce the data this time. You know, we, we looked into it and what we needed to do and how we needed to change the way we document things that we, that we have always done to prove them. I mean, that was, that was the real thing and we put a lot of work into that. Everybody did. I'll take.
What was interesting is, I asked a question, I thought minimum manning had a big impact, but actually we were, the minimum manning they look at is six to a truck.
Five to an engine, six to a truck. I mean, we only scored, you guys know.
That's above ours.
Way, way above us.
So, they had overcome that.
Yeah, I mean, we, we get about half the points for that.
Six to a truck.
Oh, yeah, it's, we should have, we have 49 people on shift now every day. That's our minimum manning. ISO and FPA, you know, it's mostly ISO, we should have 96 to get the maximum points. 96 guys on shift. So, it's, it's a huge difference. We made it up in other ways. I mean, I couldn't be prouder of the guys, the men and women who work for the fire department, the other part, you know, the water, their part, and I think we'll do better even more. They're, they're going to work on that modeling, that helps. It's not so intensive to get all the numbers out and, and my staff, of course. You know, we, we worked really hard to get this. I think it's a real benefit to the community for people to come in. I think it's, you know, that they can sleep at night, know they have a, really an elite fire department. I mean, we really are graded by ISO, we are elite.
True to the chief, he came in as Class 3 and that's one of his goals, so he went up to 2 and then to 1 and it's the, under, less than 300 communities or fire departments out of 47,000 in the country.
Right, right. Yeah, the top, the top half percent.
Congratulations.
Yeah, 99.9, you know, 99.95 or, you know, 99.5. So, so we're happy about that, you know, and, and I can't, I would not talk about the, the men and women that work on the department, you know, they worked hard too. And the thing I'll, I'll stress too is this is strictly what we do in the community for fire prevention, fire safety and our fire suppression. I mean, this is what this grades. Matter of fact, all our EMS work counts against us in a way. I mean, it counts for zero against this. And that's one of the things I think I impressed upon you before is I couldn't be prouder of the EMS work that we've done, you know, when I talked about this, we're up 600% on those cardiac events, you know, the guys did that. I mean, I initiated, we started as a staff to initiate this, this intermediate life support where we can push drugs and we, and we can do the, the extra things EMS-wise because we get there sooner. But the guys took on that training to do that. I mean, to train our guys. I mean, we train our own guys and we're, and we're actually, one of the top things, we have the top scores in the state for the I. We really do. I mean, we're doing incredible.
Good job.
Thanks, Chief.
Congratulations, Chief.
Is there any new business? Mr. Zirkel, do you, can you give us a date that you want any amendments to ordinances or anything to do with the budget by?
I'm sorry, sir.
Can you give us a date that you want any amendments to?
I'm sorry, actually, that was asked earlier. The appropriation ordinance would go on file this Friday and therefore, you know, any time after that, I would say work with Bill, just like we did last year, you come up with proper line items and then we would do the amendments. Just like last year, there would just be a list of 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, whatever they happen to be. The only thing I would respectfully request is make sure that we get the detail correct, you know, line items and things such as that, because the appropriation ordinance will be page after page of line items and object codes and so on.
Very good. Is there any citizens that want to address the committee? Is there any?
Chairman, there are two that have signed up. Shall we call them, say, here?
Yes, sir.
Mia Woods?
I think she left with the business. Thank you, baby.
Jessica?
Could you state your name and address, please?
Hello, I'm Jessica Scott. I live at 3049 Linden Lane. I'm here to discuss the Webbar. I was a part-time employee of the Webbar as head of security. Webbar is a small business located in the downtown area that was thriving until the time restriction was put in place. Since then, business has decreased. Webbar did employ 18 to 22 people, now it employs 2. 11 of those, 18 to 22, were security guards and off-duty officers. All of us are basically just waiting for an answer to see as of when we can return to our positions at Webbar. Personally, as head of security, it was my job to ensure that there was adequate security on staff. Any given Saturday night, which was our busiest night of the week, there were 11 guards on duty, typically eight men and three women. When situations arose, the staff immediately responded. I personally was the one that called the Springfield Police Department for assistance as I was instructed per the police and we've been instructed per the mayor as well. We truly want to continue to serve the downtown area and be good neighbors to those surrounding us. And on behalf of Webbar, I'm just asking that this establishment be given the same opportunities as other small business owners. Mayor Langfutter, personally, I would like to ask you, what is expected of Webbar to regain its 3 AM liquor license, as well as when can we expect that change so that we can let our employees know when they could return to work? We have obtained an ID scanner, we use wristbands to keep track of the number of patrons, as well as who our patrons are. We had a problem with people using the stamp, one person paying another per, and then going outside, and they were transferring the stamps. We have increased security at the door, using a handheld metal detector and performing searches. The music has been altered, and dress code has begun to be strictly enforced. That's all. Thank you.
Are there any questions?
I guess I'll answer the question with regards to the limit, you know, I just, for myself, I was, put it at a year. And that's because the situation of, you know, it was an exception made, and, you know, that's the direction we're going to take with all 3 AMs. And I've talked to the chief of police that I know that others have been brought up, and it's just going to be across-the-board standard with regards to, it shouldn't be accepted. I mean, it's unfortunate situation, but, you know, we want everybody to be in a safe environment, so it's just not the Webbar, it'd be all 3 AMs. And so, if it runs into that situation, that's going to be the, you know, the discipline action that's going to be taken.
Okay, so will that be one year from when we were first notified of the reduction?
Right, I think that was October, I think it was? Or when was it?
October, November, I don't remember the exact date. There was an order, a, a order from the liquor commissioner issued.
Yeah, I believe it was in October.
Mayor, I need to make a statement. We just had, talking about financing $100,000 for Innovate Springfield, and we want to bring people to downtown, and now we're talking about, well, just because this doesn't fit with the norm, we're, we're giving you punishment for, I know actions may have occurred, whatever, but if we're going to bring people downtown, then we want to bring all people downtown. We want everybody to have the same chance. So, I don't want us to be hypocrites and be hypocritical in our decision-making by going out on a limb, and as Alderman Hanauer said, you know, do we really have this money to, to fund this? And then you're saying, well, we need to fund Innovate Springfield and bring them downtown, but then we have a bar that's already downtown. The young lady said they had something about 23 or 30 people total that, that they employed, and now some of those people are not working, and, and, but where are we at? So, I mean, that's just a question. You don't have to answer it. I just wanted to make that statement that because we, we got one, one group we want to bring downtown, and we're cheering for it, and then we got one group that's already downtown, and we're saying, well, we don't, you know, you have some problems, so we're not going to work with you, we're going to put restrictions on you, restrict you and limit your business. So, I just, for openness sake, I'm, I want to know which direction we're going to take with this. And it's, I don't know the young man, I just met him here. I'm not, I'm not advocating for him, but I'm advocating for the process across the board.
Yeah, and Yadi's a hard worker. He came in, Alderman Proctor brought him in, and usually, and I'll never make the exception again, you wait six months or whatever the timeframe is for a 3 AM. But guess what? I'm not going to issue another 3 AM. So, those that have it, they better be lucky that they have it, they better cherish it because whatever happens, that's going to be the punishment. And really, you know, it's a safe atmosphere, you know, and that's the whole crux of it. So, you know, if, that's the other side of the coin. You have activities happening, people won't come downtown, I mean, because they're afraid to. And so, that's, we just want a enjoyable environment for everybody. And I think that's, everybody can understand that. You know, I was young one time, and I go out, but not at that late, but whenever it is, but, you know, that's what we want, is that enjoyable experience. But again, it's all 3 AMs. I mean, they have to, that was brought up. You know, there's, you want to be the same across the board, and that's really what I have to rely on others to do with regards to police department and that, and enforcement. And the unfortunate thing is now you have the cell phones. Everybody takes pictures and videotapes, so, you know, that's something you have to sort through, but everybody wants that safe living environment and enjoyable environment to socialize and everything else, so, but that's where it's at right now.
Alderman Proctor?
Since my name was brought up in conversation, just want to make clear, I think this ordinance for this license was sponsored by multiple Aldermen. I don't think there was just one.
Right.
This was a situation where you, right off the bat, you want, you didn't want to say yes to it, so you brought it to the city council to make a decision about, and I think there are three or four Aldermen who sponsored the ordinance, and we wanted to give Yadi a, a chance to, to do this downtown. But now it's in the hands of the liquor commissioner, you're the liquor commissioner, so you're, both, exactly, you're both in the authority to do whatever you want. But my question is, do you feel there are other bars that have kind of escalated to where you're holding Yadi's establishment at? Do you think there's other bars that kind of reached that level? And do you think, if so, do you think equal treatment has been done?
Equal treatment has not been done yet, but I have given a directive to look into it, and once I receive the information, then we'll act accordingly.
Alderman DeSenzel?
Thank you for speaking on behalf of this, and I agree wholeheartedly with what you've said. You know, on, on the one hand, we're advocating for one thing, and then we're, there's already a business in place and 23 people employed and security measures, and, you know, I've been a businessperson in the past, you don't always get off on the right foot, you sometimes make mistakes in the beginning, but you can get on YouTube and Google, you know, any of these bars downtown and see the same thing that happened at Webbar. So, I just feel like we need to, again, treat everybody fairly and put everyone on a, on a level playing field. We are talking about people's livelihoods here, and I just think if we're trying, talking about growing downtown, one area of downtown is the nightlife. Something I used to participate in, I don't anymore, and not, at least not in that way. A nice dinner downtown is fantastic for me, but, you know, this is, this, it is the largest revenue generator, and it brings a ton of people downtown, so I just...
Really, to bring it full circle, the nut that needs to be cracked that would help Yadi in his current situation is from 6 o'clock to 11 o'clock. That's what we have to generate, is that activity. And so, the real key to that is, one is housing, we talked about that, the other one is having planned activities to draw people downtown. And so, that's what we have to be, that's what we need to do more of, is have that coordinated effort to magnify the activities downtown. So, and that's the direction we'll talk about, you know, with the park on the Y-block.
Oh, you didn't have to bring that on. Take the Y-block out of this.
Because, really, that's, you know, I've told the SJR this, I said, we could build it, and it's going to be a flop unless you activate the space.
Is there going to be a par, park on the Y-block?
Well, not yet.
Alderman Tyler?
On the council, right?
No, which one's the Y-block?
Yeah, what Y-block?
I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's right.
Are you through, Mayor?
But really, that's, that's really, so any ideas individuals have between those hours, 6 to 11? I mean, that's, you know, if you had a lot of foot traffic downtown, I think that's what the key is to changing downtown, is activating that timeframe.
Alderman Tyler?
Corporation Council Circle, I, I just kind of want to clarify the process that, you know, this is something that's different than a normal ordinance or anything else when we're talking about liquor licenses. The mayor is the liquor commissioner on this, and if a, a single Alderman were to come in and want to sponsor an ordinance to issue a liquor license, that's not how that would work. It has to get the approval of the liquor commissioner, and it has to be sponsored by the liquor commissioner. Now, an Alderman can co-sponsor, but the ordinance, unless it comes from the liquor commissioner, that license will not be granted. Isn't that correct? And even though it has to be approved by the city council, it still has to be initiated and approved by the liquor commissioner before it can get this far.
The, the process, the city council sets the number of licenses, and you do not vote per se on individual licenses. You're really setting the number, which is why you'll see, you know, deleting a number, adding a number of certain class of licenses. So, the city council will approve an increase or decrease of license people going out of business, like you saw several today, that sort of thing. But only the liquor commissioner can actually issue a license via state law.
And, and that's the point I'm trying to make here, is that when it comes to the license itself, the way that our system is set up in the city of Springfield, the Aldermen do not really have a say. We could increase the number of licenses by five over what we have, but if the liquor commissioner chooses not to issue those licenses, then there's nothing the Aldermen are able to do.
That is correct. That's a executive versus legislative function. And the, the only issue in this case had to do with the issue of waiving effectively the normal waiting period of a Subclass 1, where you start out typically as a 1 AM, and then after six months, you know, the thought process being that it would be to give you, like, time to kind of earn it. And that was not followed in this case when the license was allowed to be or created at a 3 AM license without that waiting period.
And, like I said, I just wanted people to understand the process is not like, on paper, it looks like the city council is approving the liquor licenses, and we're not. We're approving the number of them or decreasing the number of them, and the licenses are completely held by the liquor commissioner, who happens to be our mayor by the city code.
And, and also by state law, that's where that comes from. Yes, sir.
And an Alderman bring forward a ordinance? I think that's the question. Can they bring forward an ordinance for a business to get a liquor license?
I don't think they have...
No.
They, they can, you can create the number of licenses, you know, authorize an increase in licenses, but only the liquor commissioner has to sign it or approve it after an application.
Thank you. Is, any more citizens that want to address it? Yes, sir. Yes, sir. State your name and address, please.
Yadi Healy, 2301 West Isles. I'm the owner of the Webbar, and I understand what you're saying about being fair across the board. And I understand that you also made an exception for me, but there was also an exception made for another bar down the street that opened up, and they didn't wait, they opened up with a 3 o'clock liquor license. But with that being said, is, I, I'm the newest person on the block. I'm the newest one. And I'm not saying that I should have got special treatment or warnings or whatever, but my question is, why was I the one singled out when other bars has had sexual assaults? They have shootings. I've never had no shootings. They've had more batteries than I've had fights, on top of their fights. Not only that, we were the ones calling in. So, if we did not call in, imagine my calls would have been a lot less because you wouldn't know, like all the other bars. And I understand what you're saying, but I almost feel like I'm being penalized for trying to do the right thing. At the end of the day, you're right, it's your decision, but like that other gentleman, he's not here, you know, when you are a business owner, you put everything into it, and you're going to fight. And like you said earlier about being fair across the board. When my incident happened, my incident was not the first incident that sparked the whole 3 o'clock issue. There were other incidents that happened after my incident, there was other incidents that happened after the main one that happened that actually sparked it, but nothing happened to them. And I understand that you're saying that you're looking into it, but at the end of the day, it's been four months since me. Since me, there was a stabbing at a food place. There's no music being played at a food place, there's no alcohol. Someone got stabbed. Before me, there, somebody left a bar, and he hit a lady on a bicycle and darned her, killed her. That didn't happen with me. So, when you say that you're being fair across the board, and I mean this with all due respect, maybe I'm blind, but I don't see it. Because at the end of the day, when incidents have happened before me and after you brought all of us into your office and you spoke to all of us, before my incident even happened, I had sent several emails begging you for help. I said, can you please make an ordinance so that I can get these people to not hang out in front of the bar? Because my issue is, and it's also been said by the police, it's not the inside of the bar, it's the outside of the bar. Also, in all the report, most of the reports, all of the incidents, they say, well, on the corner of this place, on the corner of this, they start from here, ran and migrated here, but at the end of the day, there's three other bars that are less than three or four feet away from me. You know, there's a 1 o'clock bar across the street, police cars are always over there. There's ambulance always over, well, not, not ambulance, but there's, there have been ambulance over there. So, my thing is, I don't understand how it can be fair, you know? And with me being the newest person, the newest person, why was I not given the same opportunity as all the other establishments? Okay, hey, look dude, you made a mistake, you need to fix it. And, you know, the other Alderman said one time, I'm the only one that comes in, I'm the only one that's constantly contacting, saying, hey, this is the issue, what can I do? Can you help me? Where, where can I fix it? So, if I'm trying, so basically, what it looks like to me is, I was the idiot who paid attention to you. I was the idiot who called when you told me to call. I was the idiot who decided to invest all his money into a quote-unquote "dream," because you're talking about giving him $100,000. I paid double that for that bar, and it's gone. I'm going to lose it. Everybody's going to go home and sleep, and it's not going to be a big deal. But my thing is, I'm not giving the same opportunity to everybody else. If I'm the newest person, and there's bars in this county that have been here for 30-plus years, there are shootings all the time at that place. I pulled the police records, I've seen it. What's happening to them? So, they've had 30 years of violence, I've had a couple months. And then along the way, everyone said, I, I've been trying. Officer or Sergeant Crooks, the, the sergeant that's always out there, every time we have an issue, we deal with him directly. He says, hey, do me a favor, start calling, last call by 3, by 2:30, so you can have everybody out by 2:45, no later than 2:50. We were doing that. When everybody else was letting everybody out at 3, our bar was empty. But, and then I would ask him, I was like, hey, can you tell them people to move? No, we can't do it because there's no ordinance. I told you about the time when I went out there and I damn, excuse me, darned I got beat up because I'm taking liquor out of people's hands, and then I get told by a police officer, he said, all due respect, man, please don't do that because if she decides to press charges, you go to jail, not her. When, that, that incident where you saw the fight outside, if you look in that video, do you know who's out there with that Sergeant Crook right next to him? Me. The guy in the white shirt is me. The guy in the white shirt that had the DNY on it, that was me, I'm the one out there. I'm the one, when incidents have happened with another officer, I'm not going, I don't want to put his name out there behind the bar, which had nothing to do with me, I was the one who jumped out in front of him to keep him from getting punched in the face. There was another officer that somebody else tried to jump on, and I jumped in the middle of it. Tell me one other bar that's done that, and then tell me that it's being fair across the board. That man right there, his kids' car has been destroyed, they didn't pull pistols on him. They didn't got, on Facebook, they didn't call me all type of coons, sellouts. I done went to different organizations that's supposed to help black people, you know what they told me? They told me I was a coon. You know why they said I was a coon? Because I don't do nothing for black people. But what about those six months when I opened my bar once a month, every Sunday, and I fed poor people? What other bar is doing that? I put in my own money. The first winter, just recently, our first cold front, there was a man out there was blind. He, he was walking around blind. Who put him in a hotel, paid for it out of his own pocket after you took my stuff, and I didn't make no money? I took my whole profit and put that man in a hotel for seven days. Me and this man fed him. We went over there, checked on him. Why? Because we care about the downtown community. Because we care. So, when you talk about all these other people that want you to give them money, how many times have I asked you for a penny? Never. I just asked you for help on something that I have no control over, that there is no ordinance that I can do. I'm not a police officer. I cannot go out there and I cannot arrest anybody. If the police can't tell them to leave, they're sure not going to listen to me. And then they said that there was an enormous amount of people outside. How is that my fault that people want to come downtown? Not every last one of them were bad people.
Mr. Healy, I hate to...
I know, my time is up. But I mean, I'm sorry.
I think everybody up here, get your passion, and, and if we're trying to get people downtown, we should be trying to get all people downtown.
Right.
And that's what I want, if you let me leave it at that, I'd appreciate that.
Okay.
Thank you for your time. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Mayor?
The camel that broke, well, the item that broke the camel's back was that video that, that you alluded to. that, that you alluded to, showing people coming out and fighting. So, the other thing, with regards to, you know, we are gonna take action on the other one, because when we brought you both in at the same time, that's the entity that's gonna be next. With regards to sidewalks, I've asked that, can we change the code? But I'll ask Corporation Council to explain the legal parameters of that, because, you know, our hands are tied with regards to that.
Well, outside of disturbing the peace, and Yadi knows this, I mean, he and I have talked about this issue when the, when the situation first happened, and the city cannot block people from being on the public way unless it is a matter of disturbing the peace or disorderly conduct, the mere fact of a presence, you can't simply tell people to leave a public area. So, that's a First Amendment issue, and is something the city simply doesn't have the authority to do. Now, if there's a disorderly conduct, or a, some kind of a disturbing the peace, then that's a matter that becomes a criminal matter. It might be a civil matter by way of ordinance violation, but it could be a criminal matter, in which case the officer may take a proper, you know, take proper steps.
If your guys' hands are tied, and you are the rule, you are the, the, the big hacho, how can little of you do anything? You can't. How is that fair? You just said your hands are tied. I'm, my hands are more tied than yours, because at the end of the day, I can't afford to go to jail. I can't afford to ruin my life. I've been on this earth forty-three years. I don't wanna be sicked out in a prison, because somebody else decided to act a fool, and I ran out there, and I did something stupid. Because the difference between us is, you have backing, you have legal ramifications, you have way more money than I do, you have way more attorneys than I have. You have way more to do whatever it is you need to do. If I'm out there, nobody, not nobody in this room, not nobody watching it, come out there and be like, you know what, he was doing the right thing. That guy was doing the right thing. He, he was trying to do the right thing. So, let's get him funded, get him out of prison. No. Everybody's gonna turn around like, oh, well, he should have been here to hear you. So, my thing is, if, look at what you just said, you said your hands are tied.
Very good. We, we're not gonna get into a back and forth. You made, you made some very valid points, and hopefully Corporation Council will look at those, and the mayor will, he's, he's made his decision, hopefully. But I just wanted to bring the point up, if we're trying to get one group in, and we already got a group down there, I think everybody deserves the same support. So, Mr. Zergel, is there any need for an executive session?
Yes, sir, just briefly regarding pending probable imminent litigation relating to the unit thirty-three insurance claim.
Come, a motion.
And it'll, it'll be, it'll be brief, five minutes.
Thank you, make a motion, the gents, for executive session.
Five minutes, come on, you know better than that.
Five minutes, Jeff.
That's okay, okay.
Time of second. Got a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Second.
All of the favors signify by saying aye.
Aye.
So moved.
Motion for adjournment?
We're adjourned.
He did that.
He already did it.
I missed that.
Did I interrupt your questions?
We still don't always go with responsible.